Can we do the attendance first?
Well, we can do that.
All right, cool. All right, so let's see here. Greg Daigle?
Here.
Richard Fiala?
Here.
Diane Quinn? Here. William Smith?
Present.
James Fenema?
Here.
And Laurie Alt?
Present.
Oh, maybe them. It was easy. Town of East Adams zoning board of appeals, legal notice of public hearing. The East Adams zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing and meeting on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the municipal building, meeting room 2, to hear the following. Deal number 1113, 16 Overlook Drive. Ms. Douse, Lee? God only knows what that last name is. Was that you?
Yes.
How do you say your last name?
Emma Massey.
I knew that. Good, thank you. Kenneth E. and Jo Ellen Crispie? Owner requesting variance to Section 10.1 of the East Adams zoning regulations to construct a deck nine feet from the side property line where 17 feet is or are required. Assessors map 58, lot 33. At this hearing, interested persons shall be heard and correspondence received. Dated at East Adams, Connecticut, this 13th day of June 2019. J. Gregory Daigle, Chairman.
Want to pull the chair up? We have the green cards.
Do I have a green card?
Yeah.
Oh, the green cards for the...
Not that green card. The other green cards.
I'm sorry. I have the passport for that other one with... Okay. Uh, the green cards.
We can look at that later.
Okay.
We are an interest.
I know. It is funny though.
Can you tell us why you're here?
Well, I guess I'm here to present the owners of the 16 Overlook Drive. They're not here at the moment. They're kind of, I guess, winter. Uh, so they're requesting, uh, the existing deck, the piece of the property, was built at some point in the past. And it doesn't seem like there is a permit pulled for it. I came at the, uh, call here and I spoke with the public of the zoning, I guess, officers, someone from the department and from the building department, the inspector. And so we suggested that we go first through the zoning to see if the existing deck can be saved as is and where it is. Then I will communicate with the inspector to do some adjustments in terms of safety and regulations for the construction of it. So the stairs going up to the deck are the ones that were here, which are closer to the neighbor's side. They're already built. I think it says to be built, but I don't think so. It's just a matter of, is it okay in the way that it is? It would be allowed from you guys? And then we do the adjustment of the structure part of it through the inspector? Or do we need to move the stairs completely and relocate them somewhere else that they don't interfere or be as close with the neighbor?
Now, the deck is built. The stairs are built.
Correct.
You didn't have a... There wasn't a permit issued to build a deck or the stairs?
Correct. I didn't build the deck. It was several years ago. I don't know who built it, but yes, it was built a year ago. Was no permit pulled for it. And now they're trying to sell the house. I think they sold it. I don't know that for sure, but they are in the process. And they just need to go through the zoning to see if that can be passed, these existing stairs. At this point, they're existing.
All right. So they can't sell it unless it's... Everything's in compliance.
You know, they can sell it, but the buyers will want everything to be relocated before the movie, just to know what is to happen.
Chances are the bank wouldn't approve the loan. You have the floor.
So who's the neighbor that it's gonna affect?
I don't know their name. I mean, I have their name listed, but I don't know which one is right next to it. So I guess it'll be the 18. I would assume. I don't know for sure again.
Yeah, it looks like it's 18 from the map.
Because I don't have a 14 here on the name or something, so it'll be the 18, Boselman Suzanne.
Did we get the cards back from them?
We're looking.
Got one here. 18 Overlook Drive, is that the one?
Yep.
Pick that up, Diane. Either way, they were notified, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Suzanne Boselman, yeah.
I think so.
Be good. All right, well, that's who would it affect the most. Let's see her here. Carry on, Diane. I don't have any further questions.
Richie?
The question. If this was... The deck was done illegally without a permit, how can we grant any variation to that? Because there was no permit for the existing deck and the steps.
Well, the deck is... They built the deck without a permit.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They... Okay. They're not in for the deck being done without a permit. They're here for the stairs that are being... That are...
Encroaching?
Encroaching the side yard.
Which are already in existence.
That are already in existence.
Mm-hmm.
So they need... What they're applying for is the variance for the stairs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Existing, existing deck, yeah. Okay, long as we don't get sued. No further questions.
You all set?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
When did you build the stairs?
He did.
You didn't... The stairs were built when the deck was built.
Yes.
And the deck is in conformance?
Well, so we built a...
The deck, I know, I understand that the deck doesn't have a very... I mean, it doesn't have a...
An actual paperwork, okay? So we have to do some investigation and some adjusting there with the inspector to bring it up, so that it's safe to sign.
But if there were no stairs there, we wouldn't be sitting here now.
Correct.
So the stairs are what's...
Yes.
Well...
Because these are... The deck is the same size as the width of the house, but stairs project.
Right. They can see that in this picture.
Feet are required. 17 feet are required. It looks like the house is 18 feet.
Yes, so even the house...
The house is 18 feet?
Is not...
The house is 16.
So it looks like the deck is 18 feet away... The deck itself is 18 feet away from the property line. But it's the stairs. The stairs are what?
13.
Exceed that. You see it there on the...
Yeah, the stairs are 13 feet from the property line.
Right. The house itself is 18, right?
Right. The stairs are 13, so it's 5.
Right.
No, I... I don't see where the house is 18.
16.
Is it 16? Right.
Why you are at 7, I think?
17.
Are you looking at this one?
Yes, it is.
In the 7, there is...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But then it's...
Well, this is... It says... 13. Oh, is that 13? 13 to the deck, okay.
That's what was on there. That's what was on there.
On the stairs.
All right, so the whole house is noncompliant.
That's what we're talking about right there, right?
Okay.
Do you know when the person bought this house? What was there? When would this was built? Was it built when the people owned it or was it already built? If they were having trouble signing all the paperwork, then it might have been on there when they bought it.
Then I don't know.
I mean, that makes the whole thing a very questionable, because a lot of those cottages is tagged off. The stuff's already in, somebody buys it and...
Well, it looks... The house was there.
No, there's no date as to when the deck was put out. And we don't know that the deck wasn't already there.
It is...
Well, appraisal sheet was appraised in 2017 for $51,000 improvements. That might be...
It doesn't seem to take the word about anything.
If you look at this... If you look at this picture here and you see where the deck is, in the crosshatched area, and that's superimposed on top of... It looks like a wood deck that was already there that they ripped out.
Yep. Small.
Right. So it looks like they ripped that one out.
The deck is stairs and the stairs under that from down.
It looked like a deck with two sets of stairs.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, stairs that went from under that.
That looks like stairs both ways here.
Is there any under the deck now? Anything under the deck now?
No. But the ground is slightly...
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is that it seems like there's nobody here from point... I have no...
Nobody here to answer to history.
My biggest question was answered. First, since we started, that was. Was there a building permit? That explained it away. This document says it's requesting a variance to construct it, which I think is misleading. This document, I don't think goes anywhere. This isn't a formal document or right with a deed or anything like that.
Right. They have to get a building permit.
That was my biggest concern. Since we're approving something after the fact, we should ask that question. And it was asked, answered.
Yeah, with the building permit.
Yes.
To ensure that that happens.
So whether the deck is there or it's not there, we look at this. But we approved this deck.
The building permit guy will come out and check it out.
Right.
Because if we don't allow a variance, then they wouldn't be able to get a building permit.
Right.
I see, yeah.
Not necessarily.
You getting paid by the hour?
Not necessarily. All they're asking for is the variance for the stairs. The deck is what it is.
Yeah, but here in the public hearing, it says, "constructed deck."
Yeah, well, it's already constructed, so...
I know, but that's what we're saying.
So the stairs.
If we say okay...
Yeah, I know.
If we say okay, then the building inspector can go and make sure.
But if you remember what he said, he said that they're here for the stairs, not for the deck. That's what he said in his presentation.
That's how it says here.
Something you're writing on the document.
Right.
And that sign says, "deck and stairs."
I know, I read it. I read it.
I don't know who wrote that.
One of the members of you guys.
Can I just ask a question against... Between us is that if they're given a variance for the stairs and the deck, would the deck be out of compliance if the stairs weren't there?
The deck is...
You need 17 feet, right? So the deck would be a foot out of compliance.
And so would the house.
Yeah.
Well, the worst in here covers it. And it's asking for a variance for the deck. It constructed nine feet from the property line by 17, as requested.
Right.
It says deck.
So what it says is...
It says, "that's deck and stairs." It says, "everything is covered."
Right.
Right. The stairs are part of the deck.
Yeah, yeah.
I talked to Jim a couple days ago about this. And I said, "What's the hardship?"
Because it's already done.
And the hardship is, I said, "Why can't the stairs be built in front?"
Because of the slope of the land.
Slope of the land. And where the stairs were for the original deck, it starts enroaching... Encroaching onto a leaching system.
Okay.
So that's why the stairs were put off to the side. That's the hardship.
Is this a...
That's good to know.
No.
Because that was not...
Well, you know, I ask these questions, you know?
Right.
You're gonna come over here, let...
Is this seasonal or grandfathered year round?
Huh?
Is this a seasonal or grandfathered year?
I...
There's no E.
Yeah, but that's...
Would it make a difference?
No.
No, I just had...
Well, the way...
In terms of how old it is.
Built 1960.
1950?
60.
15?
60.
60. I couldn't hear you.
It's fairly new.
1960.
Oh, 60. Do you have anything they had?
That's why it is what it is.
They're puzzled.
I don't think, meaning, my input, but obviously I'm nowhere near, you know, making the decision, but I'm in construction with a general contractor. And I drove a big house at a street. I don't think, or I don't want this to sound as I'm protecting myself or them, but I don't feel that it sounds interfering. It's closer, yes, the square, the feet. Distance needs to be from the border line. And I really communicated all this discussion with him. And that's why I said, "It just makes sense to go through the zoning first, then to bring it up." Because it wouldn't make sense if for some reason they wouldn't allow the stairs to be where they are. And then you do the construction, you bring everything, to call some little adjustment. I showed pictures to him. So he has a very good understanding of what condition and what's going on with the deck. But he said he has to work through the zoning because of the stairs. And I communicated with him or the zoning person, also the leach field, as I mentioned. And he said, "Yes, on the other side, you may interfere with the leach field area. You cannot really go too much on that side." It's one of the reasons that the stairs are in this...
But even if the stairs weren't there, it still would have to come for variance. Because...
Because unless there's a foot or...
Yeah. It exceeds the side yard requirements.
And I was just thinking, if we approve this, if we don't have any insurance for the inspector...
No, he'll...
Accept it. And if that doesn't happen before the sale, inspector comes and says, "You just bought, doesn't mean..."
Well, then that's their problem for now. I mean, that's a real estate agent's...
Thanks, Doc. So that I guess if they can afford it for their month, then the reason that they haven't bought it is because they want this to be cleared out.
Cleared out.
And for sure, they know what's happening.
So they just want to know that the building inspector can go and say, "Okay, and we've already approved it."
Could move on that part.
Right.
There's a chance that, I don't know if it's any different, but there's a chance that they will buy it, keep money on the escrow until this is resolved.
Are you ready to...
Resolve it?
They wouldn't be... At the very minimum, they wouldn't be buying it for at least a month before this is cleared up.
Someone's worried about that.
Does anybody want to make a motion to close the public part of the hearing?
Some will.
Second.
All in favor? Any further discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the request to have a variance for the steps and deck, so that the building inspector, they go and tell them what they need to do.
Stairs slash deck.
Stairs slash deck.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. It's unanimous. All right, there's a couple things that have to happen here. Number one, this decision is going to be posted in newspaper within 15 days. And once it's posted, someone who doesn't like our decision, if that person exists, can appeal our decision. And they have 15 days to do that. So that's number one. Number two, they're gonna... You're gonna... They're gonna receive... Your client is gonna receive a letter from Jim Ventress notifying about this, about the meeting. Let me get the proper terminology here. Yeah, they're gonna get an approval letter by certified mail. And that letter is gonna be filed in the land records in the town clerk's office.
Needs to be filed.
By you. Or... Yeah. When you receive the letter, you gotta come down here and you gotta file it in the records office. But you'd want to do that after 30 days. Right.
Give time.
For people to appeal it. Okay?
Town clerk's office. You gotta put that into the town clerk's office.
Right. The letter's gotta go to town clerk.
Right, the letter...
No.
No, the letter that he receives has to go by...
Certified letter, you can't have it by the town clerk's.
You got that? We're gonna send you a letter. It's gonna be posted in newspaper within 15 days. And then 15 days after that, someone can appeal it. And at that time, what... Nobody appeals it, then you can get a building permit. And then you can sell it.
Then you can build a deck.
Okay, go bang some nails. Okay, has everybody read the minutes? Does everybody agree with the minutes?
I don't think so.
That makes sense, yes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
And I'll second that motion.
Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Bills? Well, we don't know if we have any bills or not.
Okay, then I guess we're gonna forego that.
I guess the next thing to do is adjourn. Will you hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Should I turn off the mic now?
Is it off, Bill? Do you have any green card? That's what I was... I don't want that on... I don't want that on there. I dropped them over here.
Oh, Jesus, I know.
Oh, God.
That is too funny.
Yeah, Jesus.
Well, okay, after this, we're gonna have to say certified mail. Certified mail return receipts. No more green card. After this, we're gonna say, "Do you have your certified mail return receipts?"
Not green card.
Anymore.
That's right.
Why? Stephen, do you take this with you?
This is gonna say...
I don't know. It probably stays in the office.
Does it stay here?
I don't normally take it if that's the case.
No. I'm gonna... You want to... We're gonna... Take it out?
Leave the card in there. I'm gonna leave the bag here. She's gonna pick everything up in the morning.
This is the only green card in my whole life that I'm acquainted with.
Well, when you're foreign, apparently not. First thing everybody thinks about when they're foreign is green card. Who shits?
I...
Who shits?
Well, you know...
It wasn't a green card!
No, I wondered... As soon as you asked for that, I wondered what he was waiting for.
He probably is illegal.
No, he said he didn't have it. He says it's with his passport.
He has his passport.
He said it was with his passport.
Frank, I have a question. You know, it's not for the meeting, it's just after the meeting. I was wondering, on those green cards, that that doesn't get read into the minutes that they were received? And is that documented somewhere that all of those were?
It should be.
Like there?
Overall system? I don't know, because Jim gets some...
Well, if they were returned, I don't think they would stay with us.
Yeah, they stay with us.
Well...
If they were returned, you would say, "Well, forget it, come back when you got them."
But we've had meetings where there haven't been all of them retired.
Well, sometimes they don't all...
No, you bring up a good question. How do you know?
Whether or not we receive it.
Well, no. You're supposed to send notification out to everybody within 500 feet, I believe. Now, did he get everybody within 500 feet?
You got quite a few there, Chris.
I know, but did he get everybody?
Well, when he goes...
I would assume that Jim Ventress verified that, but that doesn't get read into any minutes.
You're right, absolutely.
That's...
No.
But it's part of the procedure for them to even be heard.
Yeah. That's a good point.
We're not gonna listen to them if they don't have...
That's supposed to be filled out.
So...
But they could send those out and not get any back.
Or they're supposed to have a separate list that gets printed out by Jim.
What we should have?
The other thing is the damn thing's on the...
The site map with all...
Well, we should just have a list of the names.
We should, on the paper they fill out. There's a spot for all the neighbors.
A site map and all the neighbors within 500 feet and the names of all those neighbors. And then we verify the green cards against all those properties.
Yeah, I think that when they...
It should be right here.
When they give the... When they meet the whole...
Run the back of that.
Appointment for this.
And they never are.
That's where... That should be filled out right there.
That's what Diane just brought up.
This isn't signed, by the way. I meant to mention...
Oh, what's this? Within 100 feet? What does that say?
List all adjoining property owners within 100 feet of your property line.
Oh, 100? I thought it was 500 feet. Okay, 100 feet. Boy, they really pack them in at Lake Eywood, huh? With all these stairs.
Well, that's over on the, the other side there, not on my side.
I think there's a deck on my house that I don't know has this ever been up.
Don't brag about it, though.
Building permit for, oh, it was there when I got there.
But, you know, I think when they, when they did the zoning regulations to say that, you know, year round, not year round, and like, grandfather, if this was built in nineteen sixty, you know, it would be...
When officially was zoning effective in, he said, nineteen sixty-one? Was that the Charlie Wolf?
It was around nineteen sixty, was it that?
But see, that's what they...
Say after the C and N.
Maybe they did this...
I thought it was sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
Well, doesn't matter anyways, it's regardless.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, boy.
From where?
Did you turn the microphone off?